Troy, your host. We are live and recording.
Thank you, Troy. Commissioners, are we ready to begin?
I am. I'm wondering if Troy can manage the extracurricular noise up there.
Troy, you let us know when you're good to go.
I am good to go.
All right. Well, let's begin. Let's come to order. Welcome, everyone, to Tuesday, September 24th, Board of Douglas County Commissioners Business Meeting. Time now is 1:31. And let's go ahead and start off by bringing forward Reverend Darren Kessler for the purposes of an invocation.
Let us pray. O mighty God, bless those who hold office and serve in Douglas County. We pray that they may do their work in a spirit of wisdom, kindness, and justice. Help them use their authority to serve faithfully and promote the general welfare. We pray for all the details of this meeting here, that they were carried out in this wisdom, kindness, and justice. In your name, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Reverend, for once again joining us to bring those words of peace and wisdom. Very much appreciated. If everyone will please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, turning to the county attorney for certification of the agenda.
Yes, sir. The county attorney's office reviewed all items on the agenda, and the board has appropriate jurisdiction over these matters.
Thank you, Counselor. Turning to the commission for any disclosures on any items on this agenda, commissioners.
I have none, thank you.
Thank you.
Nor do I. Thank you. Our first item up today is a resolution proclaiming September as Workforce Development Month, and I see DJ Beckwith, Principal Planner, on behalf of staff.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm DJ Beckwith with county staff. Before you is a resolution proclaiming this September as Workforce Development Month. This resolution honors and recognizes workforce development from operating centers like Arapahoe Douglas County Works. They have served Douglas County as our region's publicly funded workforce center with resources for job seekers and businesses alike. The National Association of Workforce Development Professionals has announced September as Workforce Development Month in an ongoing annual tradition to bring attention to services provided to our community through these centers. This resolution joins them in recognizing the work in our county. We have with us today Sasha Easton and Sydney Goldich, who are here representing Arapahoe Douglas Works. Commissioners, I am prepared to read the resolution unless one of you would like to read it.
Commissioners, would anyone like to read the resolution, or should we have DJ proceed?
I'm fine with DJ.
Please, proceed, please.
A resolution proclaiming Workforce Development Month during September 2024. Whereas the world of work continues to evolve rapidly and Douglas County current and future workforce remains critical to our economy and prosperity, the dedicated workforce development professionals of Arapahoe Douglas County Works, in partnership with many organizations throughout the county, work tirelessly to deliver no-cost workforce solutions to support individuals on their path to employment and help businesses find the talent they need. And whereas, how and where we work is forever changing due to advancements in technology, automation, artificial intelligence, globalization, and sustainable energy. AD Works offers an array of tools to be successful in today's job market, including successful, including resources and workshops, one-on-one employment counseling, labor market navigation, and training assistance. And whereas, AD Works worked with more than 17,000 different individuals and partnered with more than 1,800 businesses providing workforce development services from July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2024, saving local business an estimated $6.32 million through their free services. The collaborative effort helped businesses find the skilled workers they need and provide job seekers with access to in-demand, growing career pathways. For every $1 of public money spent, the return was $9.22, a new worker earning directly attributed to the value of Arapahoe Douglas County Works services. And whereas, acknowledging the work landscape continues to evolve means our workforce development strategies must also evolve. AD Works has partnered with Colorado Apprenticeship Hub to expand and support registered apprenticeship programs within the state, offering additional services to employers and job seekers. And whereas, AD Works has been a recipient of numerous awards, including Mark Sanders Award for Exceptional Veteran Services, the Economic Development Council of Colorado Partner of the Year, the Colorado Workforce Development Council's High Performing Board recognition, the Arapahoe Douglas County Works Development Board, and the Douglas County EDC Large Size Business of the Year. Demonstrates the impact workforce development has on the county's workforce. And whereas, the last two years have been in the highest use of Arapahoe Douglas County Works, workforce centered with access to in-demand and growing career pathways for finding and recruiting skilled workers. And now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of County Commissioners for the County of Douglas, State of Colorado, hereby proclaim September 2024 shall be commemorated as Workforce Development Month, passed and adopted this 24th day of September 2024 in Douglas County, Colorado.
All right. Thank you, DJ, for doing that for the board. Questions from the board or any comments by the commissioners?
Well, DJ, thank you so much for making that presentation, and I would love to hear from AD Works since they are here. And perhaps, if that's okay with the board, and as they're approaching, I would just love to recognize and acknowledge Arapahoe Douglas Works, Sasha Easton, and the work of her entire team. No doubt, we've seen a real elevation in their support of the work of the county across a wide variety of our initiatives. And I'm thinking most specifically of our Douglas County Economic Development Collaborative or Corporation, as well as our homeless initiative. And, you know, anytime Sasha is asked a question, it is met with detail, specifics, and opportunities for the community to plug in. And it is really an honor to work with you. I know you're from Douglas County, so that's always a real positive for us. But I know we often say that the, you know, the best form of welfare is a job. And it is that beginning cornerstone to self-reliance. And you don't just provide job counseling, although job opportunities are there. It's reskilling, it's upskilling, it's all the education associated with placing people into the marketplace. So huge thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Let's hear from AD Works.
Well, thank you, commissioners. I'm excited to celebrate Workforce Development Month with you all today. And really, it's a testament to your advocacy and support, as well as the support of our Douglas County partnerships such as human services and community-based organizations. Just to give you a snapshot of our service delivery to Douglas County specifically, in the last program year, so our program year runs July to June, so July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024, Arapahoe Douglas Works provided 21,059 workforce development services to 2,669 Douglas County residents. We posted 16,787 new jobs for Douglas County employers. And during the same timeframe, Arapahoe Douglas Works supported 349 Douglas County residents to attend our job fairs and hiring events. Arapahoe Douglas Works also provides real-time job posting data and workforce data intelligence to Arapahoe Community College and Douglas County School District to really ensure that their curriculum is labor market-driven and data-informed. This also helps to ensure any CTE curriculum is responsible, responsive to the business voice, and also helps with the STEM and legacy campuses. And really, you know, as mentioned in the workforce proclamation, Arapahoe Douglas Works is a leader, not only in the state, but also nationally. And that really is a testament to the support of the board, the support of the community, and the job seekers and businesses that we serve. So I appreciate it. And I'm joined by Sydney Goldich. She is the manager of our agency team and our board team, and I'm the director. And so I encourage you, if you'd like to engage with Arapahoe Douglas Works, you could access our services online or feel free to reach out to us. So thank you. And thank you, commissioners. I appreciate your support.
Thank you, ladies. Very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thomas.
Thank you. I would like to express my gratitude to Arapahoe Douglas workforce. And let me tell you why. I have been working with a mental health initiative for almost eight years. And Sasha, you're going to understand when I say this, that the most important thing I think that somebody can have is a purpose. And if they have a job, they often have a purpose if it's the right fit. And that is what your organization provides, is the opportunity for individuals to get a job. And a job not only gives them a paycheck where they can put food on their table and a roof over their head and take care of their family, but it does something for them internally. It gives them purpose. It can provide satisfaction. They can make goals for themselves that they can work through in their employment. And that is one thing that, I don't know if everybody understands that, but it's not just that you help people get a job. You help people get a life, and that is what I think is really important about what you do and what this resolution really is about. So DJ, thank you for reading it. Lauren, I see you there helping him with this, because it takes more than just one person. But I just think when you look around and people are unhappy in their jobs, it affects so many things. And you give people the opportunity to get that good fit. So thank you to you and your staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas.
Well, AD Works, in my opinion, is, I like to call it the soft infrastructure of the county and really of the Denver metro region. You know, I mean, we deal with a lot of, we're going to. We got Art Griffiths sitting there waiting to tell us all about a road project up for consideration on the regular agenda. And, you know, it's hard infrastructure. That's the, that's the stuff that you can, you can look, you can see, you can walk up, touch it, drive on it with a car. You know, the water work we do, again, something you can see the tangible result. But so many times, it's hard to see what is that, well, like I said, that's why I use the phrase "soft infrastructure." It is a part of the infrastructure of our, of our society. It's a part of the infrastructure of the county and of the region here. But sometimes, it's, it's hard to, for the average person to put their hand on it until they need it. And, well, you know, if it's not something that we encourage, if it's not something we support, then maybe it's not going to be there when that average person does need it. So I appreciate all that you guys do. I'm very happy to see this resolution before us today, and I will certainly be, be voting in favor of it. So thank you very much, ladies. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal.
Absolutely. All right. Commissioners, what action would we like to take on this resolution that has been read before us?
Mr. Chair, do we need any citizen comment on this?
Oh, thank you, Commissioner. At this time, I'd like to call for any citizen comment on this resolution. Is there anyone who'd like to make citizen comment? Jill, come on forward. And Jill, you're not a stranger to the board, but as ever, please do tell us your name and tell us where you're from.
It's Katie, right? Get her name wrong all the time. Anyway, I just want to applaud so many great people in this county, and especially this young man right here. He has worked for Kristi Noem in South Dakota as a constituent representative and also Regional Director here for, in Castle Rock for Ken Buck. And in three years and three months, this young man has done incredible things just supporting people, I think. And I think the support is greater than the one at the top that has no support eventually. So I don't guarantee he won't be at the top or he isn't. I'm just saying, what a remarkable young man we have right here as the Principal Planner of Douglas County. Let me just read off. He studied in South Dakota State University, Bachelor of Arts, Political Science, worked for Kristi Noem, who I respect incredibly well. She does great things on the farming community and her own communities, her state. And Southeast area representative for Congressman Ken Buck for Colorado's 4th Congressional District and Regional Director and, and manager of the Congressional District Office in Castle Rock, again, for Congressman Ken Buck. And Deputy District Director, May 2022 to April 2024, two years, and in Castle Rock, again, for Ken Buck. And then now, Principal Planner for Douglas County, hired or applauded in April 2024 to present. And I say thank you, because I think we're in good hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Appreciate it. And DJ, you, I know, you think I just don't appreciate at all your service in the Air Force, because I'm an Army guy, so I got to give you a hell. But, see, other people think you're great too, pal. You do a great job. Is there anyone else who would like to give public comment on this resolution? And I'm seeing no one in the room. Troy, do we have anyone online who would like to make public comment on this resolution?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Thank you, Troy. Bringing you back to the board. Board, how would we like to dispose of this resolution that has been read before us?
Mr. Chair, I'd be pleased and honored to make a motion to approve a resolution proclaiming September as Workforce Development Month.
Second.
Very good. There is a motion and second. Any need for further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that will be recorded as a 3-0, and resolution passes. Again, thank you to AD Works. Thanks, DJ, Lauren, for bringing this before us today. Moving along to the consent agenda for today. How would the board like to proceed with the consent agenda?
Are there any citizen comments about any items?
Oh, thank you, Commissioner. At this time, I'd like to call forward anyone who would like to make any comments on the consent agenda today. I do not see anyone in the room. Troy, do we have anyone online who would like to make comment, public comment on any items on the consent agenda?
I have no online comment.
Thank you, Troy. Bringing it back to the board for action on the consent agenda.
I have a motion to approve the request on all items A through AF of the consent agenda.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. Any need for discussion on the consent agenda items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And consent agenda is adopted. Turning to our regular agenda, today, we do have consideration of an intergovernmental agreement with the Town of Parker regarding cost sharing for the construction of the Lincoln Avenue Widening and Improvement Project. That's Jordan to Parker Road. And Douglas County Project is CI 2024-020. Art Griffiths, PE, Transportation, Capital Improvement Project Manager, presenting for staff.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to bring this partnering project with the Town of Parker before you. We've probably been working on this project in planning and design for 20 years. It's been a high priority on both the Town of Parker and Douglas County's transportation plan for several five-year incremental. And we saw the need and have anticipated the need to finally approve Parker Road, essentially widening this segment of Lincoln from Parker Road to Keystone. The IGA has a limit between Jordan and Parker Road, but it turns out that we were able to include some improvements all the way to Keystone, interim improvements. Very challenging widening, important regional transportation, multimodal project includes improving bike and ped improvements, as well as widening the project. In May of 2021, we entered into an intergovernmental agreement with Parker to participate in the design and the environmental required for this project. It does cross over Cherry Creek, that presents some challenges. We contributed about 750,000, or about one-third of the design costs. Parker anticipates bidding this project fourth quarter of 2024 and beginning construction in 2025. And Parker has requested the county contribute a not-to-exceed amount of $9 million, which is 38% of the anticipated construction costs of $24 million. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have about this project and partnership.
All right. Thank you, Art. Questions for Engineer Griffiths?
I don't have questions. I just know that, like many of your projects, you've been working on this one for many, many years, and it will benefit many of our residents and our businesses. So thank you.
Well, thank you and the support for the ballot initiative. This project is, Douglas County's contributions are coming, Fund 235. And, you know, we've been able to advance a lot of major projects. The I-25 Gap Project contributed, you know, over $10 million on that. The widening of US 85 is part of that initiative, and we're contributing from that fund $45 million on that project. So very important and appreciate the support that you all have to provide a reliable transportation network for people that need to move goods and get to work and other things like that. So.
Well, Art, you know, for years, you've brought so many dollars back to Douglas County, and your work in Commissioner Teal's and transportation is really significant. This is largely my district, entirely my district. And so, of course, this Lincoln Interchange and the widening is really significant to those I serve. Excuse the sneeze, but thank you so much.
Well, Art, I don't have any questions. Once again, this is one, one project among many that you and I have worked on over the years. Good to see, good to see it coming forward, and good to see us able to get it into the planning and get it working. So I have no more questions for you, Art. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and open the floor for any public comment on, on this intergovernmental agreement with the Town of Parker. Is there anyone who would like, come on forward, Jill. Same thing, Jill. You know the routine. Please give us your name. Tell us where you're from.
Has it been a year? Or did you guys do that in two weeks? Started and finished. I remember standing up last time. Did I call you Dr. Griffith of the Streets Transportation Health? Incredible. Like, really. I mean, and what, I know, you pushed through for the school kids to get that done. What, what is it about this county that we have such great people that care so much? So I would say thank you so much for your sacrifice and your excellence in not only budgeting, as I watch the extraordinary cost of just a house and what he does with just a few million. So thank you for our good roads. And I seem essential for that Parker and that 25 corridor. Great job. Thanks.
Thank you, Jill. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward and give public comment on this intergovernmental agreement? I see no one in the room. Troy, do we have anyone online that would like to give public comment on this intergovernmental agreement?
I have no online comment, sir.
All right. Thank you, Troy. Bringing you back to the board for any action.
Mr. Chair, I'm pleased to make a motion to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the Town of Parker regarding cost sharing for the construction of the Lincoln Avenue Widening and Improvement Project, Jordan to Parker Road, Douglas County Project Number CI 2024-020.
Second.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Any, any further discussion required? All right. Commissioner?
I was just going to say that our county has got a really excellent track record of what we call sharing the love. And there have been a lot of projects here with Castle Rock, and now we're doing some with Parker. We've done some with Highlands Ranch. We'll be doing some with Lincoln. And Art does a really good job of balancing that out so the love gets spread everywhere, because if people think it's not being spread, we hear about it, right, Art? So thank you for what you did to bring this forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, anything?
No, nothing further for me.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Folks, you know, Art really is one of the unsung heroes here in the county. I, I have had the particular privilege of working for Art, really for the last 10 years, right, Art? Because that's about, it was about 10 years ago, really this month, that I was still kind of a brand-new member of the Castle Rock Council. And I was told I needed to talk to you if we were going to do anything but the Crystal Valley Interchange. And I brought my fresh, brand-new, council-member-smelling ideas to you about the interchange. And, and you were very polite, I will say, knowing that many others really pretty much told me, forget about it. The, a project of that size, it, it's just not possible. And you didn't say that, Art, and I really appreciate it. You did hint it, though, but that's okay, because I think in the meantime, we got to work together on many items. Obviously, you play a very critical role for the county as a part of the Technical Advisory Committee at the Denver Regional Council of Governments. And folks, I'm telling you, we like to say nice things about Art, because he keeps us straight. But when I go down to Dr. Cog and I speak with other elected officials, they tell me how their staff talk about Art as being a real leader here in the entire region. And great job, Art. This is kind of a, a, the lesser-sung projects that you've dealt with over the years. And yet, at the same token, anybody who lives in Parker and has to make that commute down Lincoln every morning to I-25, you know the pain that comes up in rush hour and the need for this project. So thank you very much, Art, for bringing it before us. I, of course, being somewhat familiar with this project, along with many of the projects that commissioners, we, we do see month in and month out, I, I'm all in favor of supporting this IGA. And I, for one, will be casting a yes vote. With that said, any further discussion? All right. Well, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Intergovernmental agreement does pass, 3-0. Moving along through our agenda to citizen comments, we got plenty of time for citizen comments. to citizen comments, we got plenty of time for citizen comments today, so at this time, you are welcome to comment about any topic other than those that have appeared on today's agenda. This is an opportunity to share your thoughts and ideas with us. Please state your name and where you reside prior to making comments. You will have up to three minutes. Now, any obscenity and any comments calling for criminal or violent action is prohibited, and you will be escorted out. Commissioner comments, if any, will follow all citizen comments. Is there anyone who would like to make citizen comment at this time? And Jill, go ahead. Come on forward.
I feel like seeing today. Do you guys? It's a good day to sing. So beautiful weather. But, so I went to the Water Commission meeting last night, and it's kind of a waste of my time, to be honest. And I think why it's a waste, because we have some little players in that that aren't players. So if I had a soccer team and I was hiring just to go to the Olympics, let's say, because I did, and you're cut from the team because you don't make the cut, because you're not good enough to go to France and win like the girls did against Brazil this year, just recently in August, then I would cut those players for next year. And these were the players that I would cut. First would be Mr. Johns or Frank, because he is, he doesn't add to the team. And he's a good man, but he doesn't add to the team. He pulls from the good of the whole. And also Roger, I would take him out. He's self-interested and has to protect his own identity. The ones that I see players are Tricia. She's great. She, she stands with the law, and she does what's right for the whole team. And she sits back and watches, and I know she was disgusted like I was last night, as well as the other woman who left, who was with the good man, who's our county planner now. Disgusting, as we face the challenges we do, and no answers. This is a year now. And I pulled up, and I can pull up. We've got, we can get grants. They have a 2023 Colorado Water Plan that we can be a part of and not develop as if we're going to provide our own water and squeeze it from the clouds. My goodness, it's there. We have it. And it's disgusting. We wasted a year. And I'm sorry that I have that much disgust. I like my clean water. And Abe Layden, I saw a video for, was it Lubiers? Is that what it was? I think so. What a beautiful little town. I would love to keep my kids there, my grandkids, and they have radon, radian. Radian, I don't know that chemical very much. I do drink chlorine when I go to restaurants, but not in my own home. I have clean water. So we have a crisis, I saw, with a man who, they have a $1.5 billion project, 200, cleaning our pipes, replacing our pipes in Denver. Can we be a part of this? Can we be a part of what's already done? Can we not sit here and, you know what they did? Discuss? Who's going to do this paperwork, and who's going to do this, and when are we going to have this deadline? They know nothing of what's going on, really. Individually, yes, but collectively, they don't have a voice. And the ones that I would keep are these. And if I do have a freedom to speech, as I watch the flag of the First Amendment, I'll use my rights in this great country of sacrifice and wisdom and authority through people like Abe Layden and Laura Thomas, who has protected up this county for years, the sheriff and now as a representative of our county as a commissioner, has done great work here, as well as George Teal, who served in the US Army. And Abe, what a great group of people, women, army lawyer, privileged fighter woman. I don't know what we call ourselves anymore. We have no rights. Let me voice this. Three, four, four extra seconds, Abe, since we have half an hour. Commissioner Layden, sorry, I don't even know you personally. I don't speak with you personally, but I do see you prolific. And so we sat in homes.
Do you wrap it up, though, Jill?
I'm done, but thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a public comment? Katie, come on forward. You're not a stranger to the board, but please start with your name and where you're from.
Katie Barrett, Castle Rock. I see the writing on the wall to further limit B O C C decision transparency, limit public comments at business meetings, and speak up about applicants for boards and commissions. A proposed procedure to close and limit applications to those boards and commissions and appoint people to do the commissioners' bidding. The incident with Megan Silverthorne is the perfect example of misguided power and using a page from the McCarthy playbook. Smear tactics without facts invited another lawsuit. Threatening and firing a well-qualified member of the Water Board by telling him he was there to do the commissioners' bidding is a Mussolini and Nazi tactic to quash dissent and force the approval of a plan that was neither the purview nor the right course for our Water Commission. Teal's goal is to create a fiefdom led by King George. He's attempting to consolidate power by appointing mayors and chief executives to boards in service to achieve that goal. All I need to know about Mr. Teal's intention is the company he keeps. Joe Altman, election denier and con, Brandy Bradley, member of an anti-government group and QAnon supporter, Lauren Boebert, an unserious and uneducated con, as well as Jeff Toburg and Matt Bircham, who are MAGA supporters and believe the election was stolen despite evidence to the contrary. Bircham even participated in the January 6 insurrection to overthrow the American ideal of peaceful power transfer. These associates lead me to believe that George supports MAGA. Does he still believe in his oath and our Constitution? Mr. and Mrs. Teal's tried-and-true tactics pushing lies and half-truths were exemplified by the handout given to the attendees of the Good Old Boys Republican Gathering. Next, in the following weeks, we can expect a flurry of dishonest postcards. The Teal family's go-to smear method, the and-outs inaccurately state that Angela doesn't understand budgets, rules, stonings, and regulations. Please continue to underestimate her. The B O C C budget, by the way, is 713 million, not 800, as stated on the flyer. When elected, Angela will uphold her oath and be a commissioner for all the people in Douglas County. Mr. Teal must not realize how unappealing his conduct, lawsuits, and power plays are to all voters. Angela Thomas is garnering the support of Republican, unaffiliated, and Democratic voters. You might be surprised to learn that she's contacted daily by Republicans who say they will vote for her.
Ma'am, if you could, please wrap up your comments.
Even several at the Good Old Boys Meeting. Teal may be the color of grift, but it is the color of using government as your personal bully pulpit. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to give public comment at this time? Sir, please come forward, and Gary, you are not a stranger to the board, but please give us your name and tell us where you're from.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Garcia, I do have some exhibits for the board, for the county manager, and for yourself. If it pleases the board, I would like to have just a couple of minutes extra over the three minutes since I'm representing the Sterling Ranch Community Authority Board.
That's, we'll go ahead and give you six minutes, Gary.
Okay. My name's Gary Debus. I'm the general manager for the Sterling Ranch CAB. I live at my cattle ranch out southwest of Sedalia, and I also own property in Highlands Ranch. You know, I love living and working in Douglas County. I wouldn't want to be anyplace else. And for perspective, I've spent a good deal of my career, most of my career, in Douglas County, helping to build great communities. And it started out in Highlands Ranch for 20 years, as we built about 30,000 homes over that period of time. And now I'm working in what I consider the next-generation and best-in-class community, Sterling Ranch. And over that time, that I, I have to say, it's several decades now that I've been in this business, and it's been a pleasure to work with Douglas County and see all of the regional improvements that happen with parks and trails and transportation networks. That being said, I did have a letter. I'm going to read to you for the record, but Commissioner Thomas's newsletter of September 15 referenced the Parks Advisory Board meeting held on September 11. Nearly 40 citizens and taxpayers from Sterling Ranch attended the PAB meeting to support the Cabburns regional park funding request. The published agenda for the PAB had the cab request for funding as the first item of four requests on the agenda. When the meeting opened, the chair moved the Sterling Ranch community's request from first to fourth position on the agenda. Before any of these citizens and taxpayers would have a chance to speak, four hours had passed. The Sterling Ranch citizens watched as two other requests that had no citizen in attendance to support were presented. By changing the agenda with no consideration of their efforts, these citizens simply left with a bad taste in their mouth for Douglas County government and citizen involvement. How does a published agenda get changed to derail a citizen-generated initiative? And yes, these taxpayers formed a grassroots group to support their community. To add insult to injury, the following week, Commissioner Thomas callously berated this community effort and shared false information through her divisive newsletter. Here are basic facts for which the citizens, taxpayers, and voters in Douglas County should be able to rely upon. Douglas County has an adopted 2040 Comprehensive Master Plan, or CMP. Douglas County also has an adopted 2030 Parks, Trails, and Open Space, or P T O S Master Plan. That is a sub-element of that CMP. Douglas County's P T O S Master Plan includes a Parks and Trails Plan map. Note that the P T O S Master Plan map shows three distinct future Douglas County regional park nodes in Sterling Ranch and Northwest Douglas County. Why wouldn't Commissioner Thomas know this, or why wouldn't her staff let her know this? Additionally, a proposed regional trails delineated in the same area on those maps. None of these have been funded by Douglas County to date. The citizens and taxpayers of Northwest Douglas County, and that does not just include Sterling Ranch, have been, are underserved and have been ignored by the county commissioner in their district. It is not the responsibility of a developer, or in the case of Sterling Ranch and Commissioner Thomas's assertions, CAB taxpayers, to exclusively fund Douglas County regional parks. The following regional parks were entirely funded by Douglas County: Highland Heritage Park, Bluffs Regional Park, Challenger Regional Park, Bayou Gulch Regional Park, and Fairgrounds Regional Park. The above parks were designed, constructed, equipped, operated, maintained, renovated, added to, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, with Douglas County funding, not by the developers or by local metropolitan districts that Commissioner Thomas believes is a requirement by law. Last year, the Douglas County Parks, Trails, Historic Resources, and Open Space sales tax has been extended by the voters and will bring in $350 million over the next 15 years. Sterling Ranch has by law the right to apply for regional park funding. This is a purposeful lie to make a political statement that Sterling Ranch should not receive one dime of this new park funding stream. Commissioner Thomas's open disdain for all things Sterling Ranch, including the 8,000 citizens and growing daily that now reside here, is reprehensible and needs to be put on the record. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to make public comment at this time? And not seeing anyone in the room. Troy, do we have anyone online who would like to make remote public comment?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
All right. Very well. Thank you, Troy. Okay, Commissioner comments. Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, if it pleases the board, I would ask for an opportunity to move other business up one before Commissioner comments, and then revisit Commissioner comments after that.
Objections? No objections? Go ahead.
You know, I'm continuing to reflect upon, you know, I think the important comments from our community leaders about the work of our advisory boards, and we have a lot of them. This is a very special county doing great work, and no doubt, the citizens have overwhelmingly supported the ballot measure to allow us to look at $330 million for parks, open space, and historic resources over the next 15 years in partnership with our areas of interest and municipalities. I remain very concerned that there's a misconception about the advisory boards. They are providing recommendations to this body, the Board of County Commissioners, to ultimately make final determinations about allocations of resources and additional direction of staff. They're volunteers, and we greatly appreciate the work of those volunteers, but, you know, they, in many respects, serve at the pleasure of the board. They're appointed by the board, and when we receive information that sounds to me as though it's derailing the work of the board, I get concerned. I received a lot of public commentary about that last Parks Board meeting. And as chair of any board, you have a really significant responsibility to set agendas, ensure that folks who are taking time out of their busy evenings to be with us are not wasting their time. In a four-hour meeting where families showed up and were just waiting to have an opportunity to speak is wildly inappropriate. I was also apprised of some additional commentary at the top of that meeting that just did not give me confidence that the current chair is serving the will of this board. So I would make a motion to remove Jared as a Parks Board member.
Okay. Motion is recognized and heard. Is there a second?
I'd like to hear some evidence and have this.
Whoa, 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 Commissioner, hang on. A second was called, and I take it you're not going to offer the second. However, I'm compelled to offer the second. So there is a motion and a second discussion. Commissioner?
So I, I don't know anything about what's going on. I don't know that this hasn't been noticed for this meeting. I don't see Jared Taylor here to defend himself or to respond to what happened. I think we need to follow a process if we're going to take people off boards, because we follow a process to put people on boards.
Okay. So just, just, let's just clarify a couple of issues of order. Commissioner Layden made the request that we advance other business before Commissioner comments. We are in other business. I did, and by all means, please someone correct me if I got this all wrong, I did call for objections. There were no objections from the board. So we are in other business per the request of Commissioner Layden. Commissioner Layden did introduce this motion in other business, and that is appropriate under Colorado law that that be done in this manner. And so, and Commissioner, we just heard from a representative of an entire neighborhood, an entire segment of our community, on the problems that we heard from the conduct of a Parks Advisory Board meeting. I don't know how many times I need to say it in public, but it is incumbent upon our responsibilities to hold our appointees accountable to the proper conduct of meetings in, in our county. We, that conduct has been called into question by a representative, not of, not just a single citizen, but the representative of many residents here in the county. So I believe this is within order. But you may continue your comments if you'd like.
Thank you. I just think it's appropriate that it be noticed. I don't know anything about what's coming here. I don't know what happened. I think that we need to give Jared the opportunity to explain what happened.
And Mr. Chair, if I might respond?
Please do.
Well, a couple of issues. The first is, I really find it interesting that we have heard specifics from a longtime respected member of the community. We have a public-recorded, you know, Parks Board meeting where hundreds of people saw that meeting and were able to hear it. I certainly reviewed it, received a lot of messages, and then yet, there's this comment that there's no, no evidence. I can't, I, you know, I think our responsibility is to, to pay attention when citizens like Gary Debus are reaching out about their concerns and respond to them. I think the other issue is that, you know, a board appointment to a voluntary board is not a property right, doesn't warrant a trial. You know, I think there was some conversation from you earlier today, Commissioner Thomas, about wanting to do that, and you had a lot of people upstairs. You know, it's just not a productive use of our time. These are board appointees that we have appointed to serve the citizens of this community in a significant way. I certainly thank Jared for his service, appreciate the work that he has done. He is not meeting the needs of this board, and so I beg and urge a yes vote on this motion.
Further discussion?
I didn't know anything about a reason to even watch that meeting, so I didn't watch it. I haven't seen what's going on, and I think Jared, again, should have the opportunity to tell us what happened.
All right. Let me just get this right. When we go into this motion on a resolution to remove a member of a board, let me just make sure, and, and, sorry, this is a mistake I have always made my entire life, Taylor, Taylor, but it's Jared Taylor is the name of the board member. Correct?
Correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay. And staff, we'll figure out the appropriate spelling. Any further discussion? None heard? In that case, we do have a motion on a resolution to remove Parks Advisory Board member Jared Taylor for with. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I'm opposed.
Resolution passes. I trust staff did get the verbiage correct on that resolution to remove a member of the Parks Advisory Board? Okay, and let's make sure that resolution is prepared for my signature. All right. Is there any other business to introduce at this time? Commissioner comments?
You know, Mr. Chair, we just got back from a very productive day and a half in Washington, D.C., and I'm very thankful for the opportunity to have traveled out there with Commissioner Thomas. I know, Mr. Chair, you were out there earlier in the week planting seeds with regard to our critical initiatives. And in all of our meetings, concluding with Senator Hickenlooper at the end of the day, the conversation around eliminating human trafficking, particularly in the Denver metro area, was really encouraging. What we shared in all of our meetings that, you know, kind of started at 7:00 a.m. through about 6:00 p.m. when we boarded a plane, was the fact that we work very closely with a nonprofit called From Silence to Saved, who has been trying to advance legislation and whose youngest client is a six-year-old boy. Once you see this issue, you really cannot look away, and I am so thankful that elected officials, policy leaders, nonprofits, on both sides of the aisle, from across all sorts of backgrounds and spectrums, are present and energized to address this issue now. We ran a bill last year with a lot of partners, House Bill 241371, to ensure we have federal background checks on massage parlors, which can be a hotbed of human trafficking. You know, international females that don't speak the language, don't know they're being trafficked, and frankly, live at these facilities, is terrifying. But we're a county that does not fear, and we have strong law enforcement and great partnerships, as I said. So thankful that that bill did pass. We're continuing to get pushback from the FBI on the federal background checks, but strong commitments from those we elected to Washington, D.C. to ensure that we have some federal support for those background checks. I will add that we're continuing to work with many stakeholders and partners to advance legislation to increase criminal penalties on Johns, meaning that currently, in the state of Colorado, if you are caught trafficking a youth, you can get as little as probation, which is mind-boggling. So, you know, focusing on revisiting that criminal statute to ensure that those penalties are much more strict, we hope will certainly deter the perpetrators. So more to come, but it was a productive day and certainly appreciated the opportunity to advance that issue.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner.
Thank you. Two weeks ago at our business meeting on September 10th, we had a posted discussion item to remove Frank Johns from the Douglas County Water Commission. And that matter was officially continued until today's business meeting. Last week, at a work session, on a two-to-one vote, that discussion was removed from today's business meeting and was held at 11 o'clock today in a work session. Frank Johns was present. He was not allowed to speak. I asked him to speak, and the question was called. So Frank was removed from the Water Commission on a two-to-one vote. Frank Johns is a well-respected member in the water arena in the state of Colorado. Losing him off that board will be a loss to the Water Commission, and I would just like to put on the record that his behavior was not that of a petulant child. Everything that he did in that meeting is in a video that is welcome to be seen by anybody. And to Centennial Water, who Frank serves as a board member, I'm sorry that you are now not represented on the Douglas County Water Commission. Thank you.
I don't have much. I just wanted to share with everyone, I've already heard from a member of the Centennial Water Board asking if it's possible for them to remove Mr. Johns as a member. My response was, I believe he was elected, so anyone who has an interest as a client of the Centennial Water Board, and Water District, I should say, you know, we did take the action. Obviously, we have heard numerous comments about the unprofessional conduct of Commissioner Johns. I will once again state, it is the duty and the responsibility of this board to ensure that the advisory board's meetings are conducted properly. It is the duty and the responsibility of this board to be the arbiters and to take action as necessary. And to the people of the Centennial Water District, any further action against Board Member Johns, as per what was communicated to me just a, oh, not, just a little over an hour ago, folks, that is up to you. And I call upon you to be active residents in your water boards, as you've seen, we have active residents here in the county, and to take any further action that you deem necessary to ensure that you are properly represented in your water boards, just as you did here just a few minutes ago. Those who hold us accountable, hold me accountable for actions. Welcome to a republic, and may the United States and the people of Colorado and the people of Douglas County continue to live in a republic. Moving on to the county manager report.
Nothing today, but happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the county manager pertaining to the county manager report?
I have none.
I have none. Thank you.
Doug, I, once again, I think you're doing a great job. Thank you for the good report that you submitted in the packet. Very much appreciated. I have no questions. At that time, we're coming to the end of our agenda. Our next business meeting, excuse me, our next business meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 8th, 2024, at 1:30 p.m. We will look forward to seeing everyone then.